I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order, please. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone and welcome to everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Riker.
Present.
And Trustee Carter.
Present.
Okay, we would be at item four, Approval of the Board of Trustees Minutes for Tuesday, May 15, 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
No motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Any questions or corrections to the minutes?
Uftr-ing needs to be spelled correctly. Just point it out there. Other than that, it's fine.
How do you spell it?
It's U-F-T-R-I-N-G.
Thank you, Trustee Carter. Any other questions or corrections?
(inaudible).
All right. Let's vote on those minutes as corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
Yes, I have one letter. This is from the Peoria County Veterans Memorial. It says, "On behalf of the Peoria County Veterans Memorial Committee, I would like to thank you and your support for the assistance and your efforts to make a final salute to the Peoria County veterans. Our new war memorial will honor the sacrifices of Peoria County veterans representing the Korean War, Vietnam War, Grenada, Panama, Gulf, Somali, Haiti, Bosnia and Kosovo, Iraq, Afghanistan, Afghanistan and the war on terrorism, as well as any future conflicts through the construction of the new war memorial at the Peoria County Courthouse. I would also like to thank you for your participation through the donation of $500. We acknowledge that this is a charitable contribution for which you receive no direct benefit. Peoria County shall use the contribution for the restrictive purposes of related costs incurring in construction and maintaining the veterans memorial on the Peoria County Courthouse grounds. If you would like a copy of our tax identification letter, one will be mailed available to you contacting our office. Again, I would thank you for your support in honoring our Peoria area veterans." And this is from someone. I can't read the writing.
Can't rother him.
Okay.
Can't rother him.
At Peoria County Veterans Memorial Committee.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, on to announcements. Trustee Harn, you had an announcement.
I do, I do. I'd like to take a minute to talk about a St. Jude fundraiser that is going to be at one of our local businesses in Peoria Heights. A couple of friends of mine, Michelle Becker and Misty Strode, will be participating in the 36th Annual Memphis to Peoria Run. The run takes place July 31st through August 4th and is the longest St. Jude run, consisting of 465 miles. The girls are having their fundraiser for the St. Jude Memphis to Peoria Run at Noir in Peoria Heights on Saturday, June 30th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. 100% of the profits earned from the fundraiser goes directly to St. Jude. There will be live music, a huge silent auction, and a 50/50 raffle. I would like to thank Noir for allowing the girls to have this event at their establishment. Everyone is welcome, so please come out, support St. Jude, and have some fun. You can kind of watch their fundraising thing on Eminem Running. They're called Eminem Running for a Cure under the Memphis to Peoria Run. And that's it. So hopefully everybody will turn out and help support them. It costs like $3,000 per runner is what St. Jude wants them to raise to do the run from Memphis to Peoria. It's a lot of money, but it really helps out, so.
What time and date was that?
1:00 to 6:00. Yep, the live music, I believe, starts at 2:00, but the whole thing starts at 1:00. And there'll be silent auction, 50/50 raffles, the auction that have a bunch of baskets and different things to give away. So it'll go on kind of all day. It'll be a good event, you know? And it's local. So the last time the girls had it, it was down at the No-Awake Zone. So they've done it. They were only running from Dunlap to Peoria. So this is like a big step up. So it's exciting for them.
Thank you, Trustee Harn. Anyone else on announcements? I have a few. We'll be having our third movie night. It's Despicable Me. It's Saturday, July 7th, and it's brought to you by the Pearl Companies. They're picking up the entire cost of the movie. So it's free, so please bring your family. And it will also include free popcorn and free snow cones. And again, Saturday night, July 7th, in Tower Park. Also, we're having free, I'm sorry, not free, Food Truck Fridays, food vendors and live acoustic music over the lunch hour, Trail and Smoke BBQ, Nacho Mamas, Sam's Chicago Style Hot Dogs, and snowy shaved ice every Friday in June and July. This Friday, as Random Strangers will be providing entertainment with a '60s throwback. And then with the Sculpture Walk, we have docent-led tours every Thursday at 5:30 and meet out in front of Mobius in front of Village Hall. Finally, the William Shakespeare Festival Tour will be in Tower Park in celebration with the Illinois Bicentennial. The Illinois Shakespeare Festival has commissioned a new play to be performed by its Theater for Young Audience troupe at multiple locations in Decatur, East Peoria, Peoria, and Urbana. The play titled Double Double tells the story of a young Abraham Lincoln and his discovery of the joy and genius of Shakespeare's writings, its strong impact on the president's life and work. And they will be in Tower Park on July 4th at 10:00 a.m. Moving on to the trustees' reports. First is Economic and Community Development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, Police. Trustee Carter?
Yeah, I have one thing to announce. The chief just let me know that the body cameras have gone live since last Friday, and everything's working out pretty good. And that he also got a grant for those body cameras of $9,845, so it didn't cost us the full amount. So way to go, chief.
Thank you for that good news. Next would be Building and Property Maintenance. Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I don't have anything to you, chief. Is there an update?
No, that's later on in the agenda. Trustee Gett, I think we'll talk about the cameras then, but nothing right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. On to Fire. Trustee Riker.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
I think we do want to thank the Fire Department for responding quickly to the fire the other Sunday night, so.
Yeah, on Glenn.
Thanks to all the...
It was a hot night, too.
Yeah, it was very hot. I was out actually walking at that time and it was warm. So thanks to Peoria Heights Fire and everyone who helped on that. Public Works, Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Administration Personnel, Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I don't have anything at this time either.
Okay. Got a pretty big agenda, so we'll get moving right along. Next would be comments from the audience. Anyone would like to comment, please come forward and give your name and address. And if you can keep it at five minutes, we'd appreciate it.
It's Mary, Mayor, 5016 Clarendon. I'm assuming since it's not on here, I'm questioning about the possible water rate hike. Is that still a possibility, or is it being tabled, or did we just?
We deferred that till the next committee meeting, Mary.
Committee meeting?
Which would be next Tuesday. And at that, what I've asked the board to do is to come to that meeting with suggestions as far as revenue, sharing ideas, and also cost-saving ideas, and then we can move forward. So I anticipate that the next voting board meeting in July will be back on the agenda. But I think that we need to have some more dialogue on where we want to move forward as a board, as a community. So that's the reason that's been deferred.
My other question was that I didn't ask the last time was, when it was on before, was there a possibility it would go up past the $10 after a certain point? There was something said about it being $18. If the $10 wasn't going to cover the whole...
Well, it definitely doesn't cover the entire, but that would take, of course, board action to increase that in the future. But as far as what was proposed, in my recommendation, it was just the $10. There was no increase.
And no possibility of it going on our property taxes, or is that still up in the air also?
That's still up in the air as well.
And would that take care of, what about the recycling? Is that part of it, or would we?
I think we're going to rebid both. I think that the recycling is up August 1st, and December 31st is the actual trash contract. So I think that we're going to try to get those simultaneously negotiated, so. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Chief, welcome.
Norm Riker, 5016 Glen Elm Drive. I'd like to ask if the garbage and the recycling is one line item, or is that separate line item?
It's two separate items. Yeah, they're two in the budget.
So then you're not going to be putting the $10 toward the recycling? Because if you are, me and a lot of other people are going to drop out, because I'm not paying for recycling.
No, recycling was a whole nother, is a whole nother number that, as Mr. Sutton mentioned, that we want to align those two contracts currently. We have a contract for waste collection, and we have a contract for recycling, but we hope to be able to save money by putting out a bid for a single contract that would include both.
So that would be one line item, then?
Yes.
So then you would basically be charging me for recycling. I wouldn't be able to tell the difference, right?
You know, that's, Norm, that's a good question. I think when communities bid those, they normally include recycling. The board could bid without recycling, I would guess, so we could just bid waste.
Well, if there are two line items now...
Yeah, two different companies.
Then if you move them to one line item, then I'm not going to know where my $10 is going, right? You can put it anywhere you want in the garbage contract.
It's a work in progress, but that's how it may end up, yes.
So then you'll be charging for recycling? Because all these years, you've been touting the fact that we have free recycling, and now you're not going to have free recycling.
Well, really, it's...
Technically.
Nothing is free. Taxpayers are paying for it one way or the other, even though we haven't been charging you. But it's another 140-some thousand, I think, for recycling. The village added it, and there was never a way to pay for it. But we feel pretty strongly, if we did those, bid those together instead of separately, we would save money by having one company instead of two. But I understand your question, that you're saying that you prefer that we don't have recycling as an option? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I don't want to pay for it. That's what you should understand, is I don't want to pay for it. If I got to pay for it, then I'm going to opt out of it.
And that's a possibility, too, that the board could, you know, could include that if you want recycling, you pay for that.
And, you know, ever since you started the recycling, I have, it's been my opinion that the garbage had to go down. There's no way that GNO is hauling the same amount of garbage before recycling as they were previously. But now, you're paying, you're still paying more. They're charging more. They never did drop their price. And now they're taking landscape waste during the week just to make a full load to go to the landfill. And you're paying for, you're not paying extra, well, you are paying extra for landscape waste. It's all included into the bill.
You know, that's an excellent point that I never thought of. I know personally, my own garbage went down by probably half or more once I started recycling because...
But the bill never went down.
That's, and a lot of it, I think, is based on the tipping fees at the landfill. So that's a good point, and we'll take your remarks when we get into consideration when we prepare this contract. And that will be publicly done as...
It just seems like the board is, instead of increasing my property taxes, you're putting all these fees on me. You might as well just increase the property taxes if that's what you got to do, because you keep adding all these fees. And it's the same thing. You can say, "Well, we didn't increase your property, we didn't increase your property taxes." Tell yourself anything you want, but you did. You are. And I don't know what the answer is, but you can't keep increasing fees all the time without trying to find a way to do stuff for less.
We're trying to do both, and I appreciate your remarks. Garbage, the fee for garbage is a big number. That's a big cost to the village, so that's why we're trying to address that, but I appreciate your remarks. Okay. Yes, welcome, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to address the board. First of all, my name is Jim, last name Becker. My address is 2015 Grandview Terrace in Peoria Heights. I didn't have this as part of my notes, but the last gentleman brought up a very good point. And that is, remember, anything that's part of property tax can be deducted on state income tax, where fees cannot be deducted. So if you put this garbage tax on the water bill, can't deduct it. But if it's put on the property tax bill, it can be deducted on state income tax. So on the water bill, we're losing twice. Just a thought for you. I again wanted to discuss the proposed garbage tax, especially its impact on a lot of the people that are not here tonight, residents that are elderly and on fixed incomes. We've talked about this previously, and I hope that the garbage tax and its inflammation to you folks are not a done deal. I fully realize that the Heights Board must live within a budget. However, the Heights is not the only one that has to live on a budget. The only difference is that we that are on fixed income do not have the ability to require anyone else to give us a raise to compensate for this tax or this fee. I'm sure you've heard the expression before, death by a thousand cuts. That's what we're facing now, at least those of us on fixed income in the Heights. Every governmental entity has a reason why they must raise tax and have a tax increase. And each has a mandatory way to extract that tax from its citizens. Just this year, an increase in property tax. Just this year, an increase in state income tax to its full complement of 4.95 from 3.75. Creation of the Peoria rainwater tax that affects most everything that we must purchase, given the fact that there is not a full-service even grocery store in the Heights. An increase in gas prices, which triggers an increase in gas tax. And a proposed county sales tax increase in October for road repair. Road repair that's supposed to be done with gas tax dollars. Now the Heights wants $120 a year with the promise that it will probably go up next year. The above items are just taxes and not part of the everyday inflation that is also just killing us. We do not have, at least I don't have dementia bad enough yet, that we have forgotten the promises of people that said a few years ago, "If only we would allow gambling in our community, every dollar of those proceeds would go to our schools." Just to see, almost none of it make it to the end result of the schools. We're in hopes that if implemented, this fee, tax, whatever, won't just disappear and be used for some other administrative responsibility. Thank you very much, and please consider those that have fixed means and fixed incomes and no way to even attend a meeting like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Yes, please come forward.
Hi, Shirley Fowler, 1130 East Dukewood Avenue. Those were two of my concerns, too, was the fact about the recycle wasn't included in that deal and everything. And so, but I have a question about property tax. I have a freeze on my property tax. So who do I find out? If you put it on my property tax, does that go up even with the freeze that were offered through the state? So on the county taxes, yeah, that was my question about that, so.
Go ahead.
It's my understanding it won't have any effect on the freeze. It's two different things. But again, we're still, and I want to make this point, and that's why we've deferred this, because there's all different ways to approach this. And I think that we do need more dialogue, and questions like that need to be answered, what's best for the village. That's why we've deferred it. And I expect this board will come to next week's meeting with all these different ideas, where we don't have to go this route, or we do have to go this route. And I'm sure all these questions will be answered, so.
Okay. Now, you said we were in the red, and that the garbage fee was helping us to be in the red rather than the black anymore. So how far are we into the red that we need to figure out some way to stay out of the red? You know, and get back to the black, where that you have money and funds and you're not over, because almost everybody is anymore. Nobody has money, so they pick it and borrow it from this one or that one.
Just to give you a quick snapshot, and this is very high level. We started out in the budget discussions, almost $900,000 short.
Okay.
The village, on the property tax side, for every dollar, and this is rough numbers, for every dollar that you pay in property taxes, the village only gets four or five cents of that, of that dollar you pay. The rest goes to schools, it goes to ICC, it goes to the Transit Authority, it goes to the county, it goes to the park districts. So we take on your property taxes, I know they are high, but the villages take, if you look at those, it's very, very small. And nearly all of that money goes to fund the police pension. Nearly all of it. Because for a long time, the village did not fully fund that, and now we're catching up. So on the rough numbers on what we spend as a village, about 70 cents of every dollar we spend as a village goes towards personnel. It goes towards Public Works. It goes towards police. Those are the two big ones. And then the rest of the 30 cents, a good share of that's going to go to things like waste collection, and it's going to go towards recycling. Those are two big numbers that stand out. So we, as a village, are now so dependent on sales tax. And a lot of times, people ask the question, "Why do you pay so much attention to business?" I think all of us here, we are so committed to our citizens. It's all about the people who live here, but we've got bills to pay, so yes, we're always concerned about development and how we can continue to grow business, because they pay the sales tax. And that's really what runs our village. It used to be Pabst Brewing, but Pabst is long gone, and now it's the small restaurants, it's the retail stores that collect sales tax. That's how we really pay our bills. So over the last, you know, you could look back, at one time, the village had a surplus of nearly $3 million, probably 12, 14 years ago. Stephanie's our treasurer's here, she could tell you better than I. But we've had shortfalls, and we've been spending those reserves to balance the budget. The way I would equate it, if you had a home income and your income was $40,000, but then you started buying some new things, and you added things to your household budget, maybe a new car, new furniture, and you were spending $50,000 a year, and you only had $40,000 in income, but you had some in savings. So you were taking $10,000 in savings every year out, and you were thinking that you had a balanced budget, but in reality, you were using savings to pay your bills and balance the budget. That's what's been done, and now the reserves are gone. We don't have anything left in reserves, and now we're facing, I don't want to use the word crisis, it's not a crisis, but we're facing some really difficult decisions that everyone, the citizens, should be a part of in helping us solve this problem. So waste collection, and Chief Riker rightly pointed out that waste collection, we brought in recycling, which I believe is a good thing, but there was not a way to pay for it. And then, you know, the tipping fees at the landfill, the cost of the landfill, the cost of the wages, that's escalated, and all of these costs have been added. And we've, not me, the passports have worked really hard here to keep property taxes low. So that's kind of where we're at, and we're open for all sorts of suggestions. And we certainly don't want to, as I said, 70 cents of every dollar we spend is basically on people. And I don't think people want their services cut back. I certainly don't want to do that at all. I don't want to reduce anybody in Public Works or police at all. We have a very safe community. We've got the best plowed streets, the best maintained streets anywhere. And I'm very proud of that, we all are. And we don't want to change that either. So we're open for all of your suggestions, and we're all intently listening to all of you. So thank you for being here.
You're welcome. I just, I'm the type of person that, we've always tried to live in our means, you know? I've done things like buy 90%, or same as cash, all this kind of stuff, 0%. I kind of live that way, because I don't want to accumulate debt. But you don't have to accumulate debt anymore. It takes all your money just to live. It's not like you have extra to, you know, to do that with anymore. It just takes, you know, I'm really not in debt, but it takes every bit of my money in the month to pay my bills and do all that kind of thing, you know? At the end of the month, to come out. Sometimes I do have to get into my savings for medication and stuff like that, because I don't quite have enough to cover everything, although I've done a pretty good job of checking every route and every way that I can do to save money and where I can do it at. So that's just the way I am, you know? So I have to, I have to live on a budget also, so I do understand what you're talking about there. That's good.
We appreciate you being here tonight and sharing your story with us, and believe me, we're all listening very closely.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, too. I really do. Okay, thank you.
Did you also notice I took your advice from last meeting and put the board meeting date on the board, so?
Oh, yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
You know, I understand that, as you said, that we're operating in the red and that there's things you have to do to tighten, tighten your belt, and I guess I just have a question of, I'm not going to say there's not a need for it, but I see on the back that tonight they're going to ask to buy two dump trucks and borrow $250,000. And I know you talked about the police vehicle at the last meeting. If we're tightening our belt, or, I mean, I'm sure everybody here would love to have a new car. If they can't afford it, they got to make the old ones work. Now, I'm not saying the ones, you know, maybe the dump trucks are junk, but $250,000 and another new vehicle, and you also put out for a job, for a code inspector job. That's another annual. And how do you expect to pay his salary or her salary?
We wouldn't add any positions. This position will pay for itself through the, through the fees and that we were...
But you're going, but the fees, I understand, are going to be for the rental property fees, correct?
And, and code enforcement, and building inspector.
But the fees are coming from the people that have rental property? That $150 that if you have property, okay. Well, let me ask you this. If I don't, if I have a house that's, you're getting $1,500 a year from me for property taxes, and my water bill's $75, and it might go up, I'd be better off tearing that house down. And then you're only going to get a couple hundred bucks from me for the rest of the time on that property, to get away from paying that water bill, which doesn't seem like much, but it does at the end of the year, and especially some of these people, once again, that are on fixed income. I'm just saying, if you have to tighten your belt, and you have to look at ways to save money, then maybe we need to look at, look at it. Just because you might have budgeted for it, you may need to change your budget in the middle of the road.
I'll comment about the police car. I can't, I'll have Trustee Harn comment about the dump trucks, but, you know, we roll out a five-year plan, every five years, on capital improvements and what we have to purchase. We've gone two years straight without a purchase of any black and white vehicle, which to outfit those, you're looking more in the $35,000, $38,000 range. This is a bare bones that will be outfitted more like our traffic car, so I think this was a happy medium, as far as, we actually budgeted 25 for that line item, and I think I came in way under that with getting some vehicles together to trade in to cut that down. So as far as the police car goes, we have done that, Mary. We've been very, very frugal in our equipment. A lot of our cars are getting up there in mileage, obviously. Being a police department, you know, any public service, any emergency service, you have to be careful with, you know, you get up to, the vehicles get to a point where they're not safe. So I think we've been very frugal with that, and I think this is another... So, I think we've been very frugal with that, and I think this is another example of that. This car is, is bare bones, it'll be used more of a traffic car, but we're not outfitting it with all the other things, because that would increase, like I said, it would double. But as far as the dump trucks, I believe that was a need from the Public Works Department. I think we are also trading in a couple to offset some of that cost.
Yeah, the two we're replacing are 17 and 18 years old. So they're, they're shot. I mean, they're in the sand.
Yeah, I understand that part to a certain extent.
You, you have to have the dump trucks replaced, because otherwise you're going to have snowfalls where people are waiting forever because the trucks are broke down, and you start spending money. Trucks aren't like a car. I mean, a transmission's 20 grand in a dump truck. And I, it's so easy to go through a lot of money in a short amount of time repairing and fixing, and, and they have been repaired and fixed to death. And that's, that's kind of the point of buying new ones.
That's fine, you know, like I said, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but I'm just, I just would like to see it across the board, not just tax us and not just raise every like norms, that every little fee adds up at the end of the year.
I so agree with you.
You may say you're not raising our property taxes, but you're, you're nickel and dimens to death.
No, I agree, yeah. I personally have old stuff.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a quick question based on an item that was touched on at the last board meeting. That was you, I believe Chief Sutton brought this up, situation of a police officer at the schools, the high school and the grade school, be there eight, nine months of the year, then the other three or four months would be dedicated back to the police department. And the bill on that was going to be approximately $50,000. Is that a correct statement?
It is a correct statement, it's actually on the agenda tonight, Mr. Becker. I know the school district did unanimously approve the SRO agreement, which would be pay $50,000 of that officer's salary, so that is true. That was, it's on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Is that money coming from school or in effect property tax? Or is it going to be some type of a special fee that's going to have to be loaded into the budget somehow?
We don't know how they're going to pay for it, all we know is they're giving us the money, but how they.
Coming from the school district.
Yeah.
It's from their budget.
Yes, it's their budget, yeah.
But in effect, that is a, how do I want to phrase this, new line item for this coming year, starting in August, September timeframe?
Correct. In the 19 years we've had a school resource officer, the school has never paid anything towards his salary. So, that is true.
So, again, $50,000 more of expense as far as where it comes from, whether it be property tax or as a line item in your budget, that will have to be covered at some point.
Yeah, we did budget for that revenue as well. We anticipated about $45,000. If I, if I'm correct, that we would be receiving from the school, but it was actually a little bit more, so.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Anyone else?
I was up here at that meeting when you guys were going to raise the tax a quarter, a lousy quarter on $100. And three businesses were up here complaining, three. Truskers, Hearth, and Paparazzi, his wife. She was not very pleasant. The other two were very pleasant. A lousy quarter on $100 is what you guys wanted to raise that, and you turned it down because three people were up here complaining. I think there's more than three people here tonight complaining. But I've spent more on tips than what you guys wanted to raise that tax. And that would have, I think you guys said that was $100,000, that would have generated $100,000. But you guys bowed to the pressure.
It still wouldn't have been enough, though, to cover that.
No, but it would have been a start.
And if we put it on the, the, if we don't start it until January, we won't see it. It would not have helped our budget this year.
That's fine, but it's a start.
But we can still go back and do it, though. We can still, we have been talking about it.
Maybe if the, if the businesses don't come up, you might, but if they come up, I don't think you will.
That was tabled, by the way, it was not denied, so we can bring that back up, just so that's for the record.
As far as I'm concerned, everything's on the table, including that. We want to bring that back up for a suggestion, that's fair game. Okay, anyone else that hadn't spoken? Public comment going once, going twice, public comments closed. So we're on to old business, any old business coming for the board?
Well, I, yes, I, I do. Because to chime in with everybody else that's on here, I thought the last meeting that we would call a special meeting to go over, to relook at the budget and to look at the garbage. And I thought we were going to do that last week, but, so I, I, I don't know about the rest of everybody else, but I feel that we need to have a special meeting on the budget and this garbage and, and get it where we need to be. And also, might as well bring old business up, I would like to see the quarter tax come back. I want to, I want that re-put on the agenda to discuss amongst the board, so we can all talk about that and, and.
Can't we talk about that Tuesday?
So if we want to vote on it, we can vote on it.
Put that on Tuesday's meeting, can't we put that on Tuesday's meeting? We got a meeting next Tuesday.
Cheryl, I, I called Monday to see if we were going to have a special meeting last week, and it was decided that we weren't. And so I guess we're going to move it out, and this next departmental meeting is when we're going to discuss it, so that we could move the vote out.
I'm open to a special meeting, and I would prefer that, but I was hearing from some of you that you didn't want any more special meetings, so we, Chief Sutton, I had him send out the email. Did you get any return emails on, because you sent that out, what do you want to do? And we can do it next Tuesday, or we can, we can send out some dates tomorrow.
I never received an email like that.
The email I sent out basically was acknowledging that this is going to be deferred to the next committee meeting. If the board wants a special meeting just on that topic, that can be set up, that, just as long as we, obviously $48 hours to post it, so that's, if, if that's what the board wants. But I was never given that exact direction. I made the decision to pull it from the agenda so we can have more discussion. Now, what platform you want that on, I'm open to.
Yeah, how about Tuesday, we put those two topics on the agenda.
We got a meeting coming next Tuesday, let's just take care of that on Tuesday.
I think that quarter percent was 145.
I'm hearing two want a special meeting, I'm hearing two don't, so how about the other two? Where's the majority?
Special meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, I just want, I want a meeting that can talk about all of this, and if it takes us all night, then we need to do this, because.
We already got one set up for Tuesday.
We need to prolonging all of this stuff. We need to figure out, what are we going to do with it?
Well, unless the board feels differently, I think we can get that done Tuesday. It's just a matter of buying in and getting it done, and bringing, like I, like I stated in the email, come with the idea and be part of the solution, not the problem, and that's my whole point. So if we want to do it Tuesday, I'm on board, let's get it done. If we're not, then we can set a special meeting, I'm, I'm open.
Well, let's go with Tuesday and.
If we can't get it resolved, then we're going to have to call a special meeting.
There we go, regular board meeting on Tuesday, we'll just.
All right, two items. We'll start it Tuesday, but please, if you have specific suggestions, pass them on to Chief Sutton.
Do you want those cost-saving suggestions before the meeting?
I think that would be better than the board can start thinking about that. I know, I know you have one, Trustee Riker, so we, we'll put that on the agenda. At least for discussion, and then we'll, if people want to move it forward for final action, we'll do that. And even though you and I may disagree with, on that, I applaud you for at least having a, a suggestion, so I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay?
Well, and even, no matter what we do on the 26th, we'll still have another committee meeting. Well, we did, did we cancel the July 3 committee meeting? Did we approve that?
So, my other thing was, I mean, I forgot it. All right. It's gone, I'm sorry.
We're going to be here a while, so if you think of it.
It's out there, but it has to do with the next meeting, so.
Okay, if you think of it, bring it up. Anyone else under old business? Okay, on to new business. The first is Resolution 2018-3, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for performance of demolition work at 618 East Scioto Avenue. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-03. We did talk about this.
Do I have a second? Let me get a second.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
I did, we did talk about this at the last meeting. This went out for bids, we received two of them, and I always get this name wrong, but is it GMAC?
JIMAX.
JIMAX. JIMAX won the bid at $6,599.25, and that was for the demolition work at 618 East Scioto. So I'm just making the motion to approve that we go ahead and, and proceed with this.
Okay, any questions for discussion? Just while we're, while we're talking about things, we, the village is spending a lot of money demolishing, demolishing homes, so that's been a, a cost of ours. We did get some grant money that I think has, has helped out a lot, but this is an ongoing problem, so. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, thank you all. Next is Resolution 2018-4, a resolution authorizing rebate of a portion of a special service area tax. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-04.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, back to you, Trustee Mariscal.
I'd like to welcome Steve Klein up to the village lectern to give a brief explanation of this one more time before we take a official vote.
Welcome, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, good evening. I was here on June 5th, I went through this in pretty good detail. Essentially, as part of the redevelopment agreement that the village has with the Hugh Building or the Truskers Project, one of the provisions in that agreement was that the village established a special service area that included that property. The idea was that the special service area serves as a firewall, so to speak, between the annual bond payments that are payable by the village and your general fund, because we do not want the, the village to have to place a levy on your general fund tax, okay? So if there is a shortfall anticipated due to insufficient real estate tax increment or insufficient municipal sales tax that's generated by the project to make those annual bond payment commitments, then the SSA tax would help fund a reserve to make sure that the village has enough money in place to make those commitments. So, the SSA provides for a levy of $180,000 a year. But you abated most of that this last tax year and ended up levying a smaller amount, about $70,000, $75,000 I believe was levied. And when the taxes were, were paid then, the, they were paid in two different installments. And we've already been back once and asked you to reimburse what was then the second installment of the SSA tax that was paid when the taxes were due, because there was enough money forecast in the reserve fund to be able to make the obligations. Now, this, several months later, we see that the sales tax that they're generating far exceeds what the original expectations were, and that between the village's calculations and our office, we're satisfied that you're going to have enough money to make the bond payments and fully fund the reserve account for the next payments that will be due. So, the short answer is, is that the SSA funds are not needed. And this resolution then essentially reimburses or rebates back the first installment of that SSA tax that was paid.
Thanks for a very good explanation, Mr. Klein. Stay right there if you will. Any discussion or questions on this? Katie, anything? Jeff, anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, just to add.
Come forward if you would, please, Katie.
Just wanted to add, thank you, just wanted to add that it is, it was an additional tax, and I know that, that Steve said that, that that can only be used for certain funds, as, the conversation was very sensitive earlier today, I just wanted to be very clear that those funds have designated purposes and cannot be used for those general obligations. So I just wanted to be clear on that, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you're ready to vote, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay. Steve, if you'd stay right there, we're going to vary, if, if there's no objection, because there's two resolutions that we're going to need you for, so we're going to skip the SRO, and we're going to go to Ordinance 2018-1554, an ordinance approving and adopting Piera Heights Business Development District One Commercial Exterior Beautification and Renovation Program. So, Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1554.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, back to you, Dan. I'd like to. Back to Steve? Okay.
Yeah, and you have the ordinance, you have a copy of the, the program itself, if you want, if you want a pretty bound copy, which will look like the type that'll be made available. Pass it around. Again, I talked about this last time on June 5th, be happy to answer any questions, but this program was really at the request of the Advisory Committee that the village organized to help make recommendations for how the business development district funds should be utilized. And so it's only with their input that this has come to the board, and their suggestion is essentially summarized on the very front page there. And what this is, is a 75% matching grant, not to exceed $10,000, all payable out of these business development district funds, which have to be spent within the business district area. And we've provided an example of the types of things that the funds can be used for, but they're primarily geared towards exterior facade renovations that face a village street. It is not intended, this program is not intended for roof repair, it is to make the buildings look better and to improve the exterior facades. There's an allowance in here for if, as a consequence of redoing an exterior wall, it requires some renovation to fix the inside of that wall, that's fine. But again, this is all really directed towards exterior facade types of improvements. And the ordinance that you have is asking for the village to earmark or allocate, if you will, $50,000 out of the business development district fund to be able to fund this program. So if you had five $10,000 commitments come along, the money would be exhausted. But it's a not to exceed amount, so it's not to exceed a $10,000 grant, it could be something much less than that, as, as long as it doesn't exceed 75% of the total cost of the project.
Who reviews those applications?
They'll, each one will go to the committee, the Advisory Committee will review them, and then they will also come to the board, and the board has the final say on every one of these. There's, the last page of the document includes a form, and there would be a vote by the village board to approve any of these grants.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Next we would go to Ordinance 2018-1555, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with LSH Investments Limited. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1555.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Klein.
You entered into a pre-development agreement with Larry Herman for this apartment, Duryea Street apartment building last August, I believe it was. And it contemplated the same terms that you have here in this redevelopment agreement, except for a couple of things that I'll point out for you. But the process is that you approved a pre-development agreement originally because But the process is that you approved a pre-development agreement originally because the TIF district had yet to be formed, it hadn't been established. So the TIF district was established on 20th of February, and so it is customary then for a pre-development agreement to be ratified again or rolled into a permanent redevelopment agreement. And that's really what's prompted this agreement that you have in front of you. So it will take the place of the pre-development agreement that you approved last fall. The change, a couple of changes only include the cap amount that's in the agreement. So originally, the agreement was obligated to reimburse an amount not to exceed $1 million on the project on a pay-as-you-go basis. If at some point the property is generating a sufficient amount of real estate tax increment, the village is making a good faith effort here, saying it will make a good faith effort to consider issuing bonds to help bond out as much of it as possible, but that would only be bonded on the TIF real estate tax increment that that project generates. So it would be limited to the amount of revenue available from the apartment building. That's another calculation that will need to be made later, after we know what the assessment is, and we can kind of determine what the various structures, bonding structures might be. What you're approving tonight, essentially though, is a pay-as-you-go reimbursement, so that when the project's finished, it's assessed, and the real estate taxes are paid every year, you'll be reimbursing a portion of these costs on an annual basis out of the increment that the project generates, after the, you've gotten the money from when the taxes are paid, okay? Only out of the increment that that apartment building generates. And the reimbursement rate for that is discussed in the incentives, and it is at a rate of 75% of the annual net, excuse me, real estate tax increment, net being net of the village's obligation to the intergovernmental agreement with the school district, as well as a proportionate amount of your administrative costs to maintain the TIF district. The dollar cap was originally $1 million in the pre-development agreement, and, by the way, the exhibit in the back, and I'll point you to the right page here in a moment, page 14 is Exhibit 1, which itemizes the TIF eligible project costs that have been estimated for the project. Those are just under $2 million of TIF eligible expenses. The original agreement was capped at, to reimburse $1 million over the life of the TIF district. The change in this agreement is to increase that cap from $1 million to $1,127,600, because the additional $127,600 was incurred by Mr. Herman for public infrastructure that, originally the cost of which was not known before he started the project, for stormwater improvements out on Durie Street. Is that correct?
Yep.
So he is asked to have the $127,600 amount added to his cap amount. So he's got a, the apartment building will need to generate enough increment over the life of the TIF district whereby 75% of that net increment then would be reimbursed back to him on an annual basis until he receives $1,127,000 where the TIF ends, whichever occurs first.
What if it doesn't?
What if what doesn't?
What if it doesn't generate the $1,127,000?
Well, there, the, the risk, the, is inherent to the developer in these types of redevelopment agreements because of the pay-as-you-go nature of it.
So there's no risk to the village? It would be?
There is not, because it's all coming out of the new money that the apartment building itself will generate.
Okay.
So we expect and anticipate that it will generate enough based on current tax rates and what the expected assessed value is. But again, we don't know exactly what that will be until it's been finalized. But the best projections we have is that the $1,127,600 is an attainable goal over the life of the TIF district on a pay-as-you-go basis.
That's a good question, Trustee Harn. I think it's, it's a good time to pause and to compliment the board that's been here for a while, and to compliment Mr. Klein and the way he's helped us execute these deals, because we do TIFs differently here in Peoria Heights, and they are project-driven and at minimal risk to the taxpayers. And it's exciting to have this development, because one of the challenges that we face is that we have lost a large part of the population over the last 25 years, and to finally be able to reverse that, and now to be able to literally increase the population. And Mr. Herman tells me that he's over one-third leased in his development, so we're hoping to have another 50 to 75 people living here in the village, and that, that's all really good news, so. Larry, is there anything you'd like to update us on in your project?
Um, we're working hard.
Okay.
But no, we are drywalling, painting, there's 30, 40 people there working every day. We're going to hit our target for November, December, November, and we expect to be fully occupied by that time. So we're just thankful for the village, and thankful for this board, and thankful for the community, and the people that recognize the significance of the great place to live. We are pulling people from other communities that want to live in the Heights, but have never got the opportunity, so they're going to be moving here from Bloomington and other communities to take part of what you've created here in Peoria Heights. We're thankful for that.
Thank you, Larry. All right, anything?
One other item I wanted to point out here, too, is that the cost to establish TIF District 3 was financed by Mr. Herman to the village. And as a result of that, and this provision was in the pre-development agreement last fall also, but he's to be reimbursed for those costs essentially out of the first increment that's generated in TIF 3, so he gets those costs back first. And one of the things that was added in here to add some additional clarity, since the Samuel Avenue project is the only other project that is currently, for which you have an agreement for in TIF 3, and it too is benefiting from the TIF district, that agreement already anticipates that a portion of the increment from that project would be used to help pay for the TIF district. But we're ensuring in this redevelopment agreement with Mr. Herman that at least $15,000 of that increment will be directed to his benefit to make sure that he's not the sole project paying for the development of the TIF district, because both projects kind of came along in fairly close amount of time together. And so it's all contemplated in the other agreement, and we just wanted to clarify it in this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And I just also want to add that this has created a, a real interest in residential development in Peoria Heights, Larry being first in, and he took a lot of risk. Chief Sutton and I have at least a couple of meetings coming up with people who are interested in, in bringing additional residential development to the area, so we're excited about that. Questions for Mr. Klein, or comments or discussion on the motion?
One last question. So the, the $15,000 for the TIF 3 development cost, that's covered in the $1,127,600, right? That's not in addition to that?
No, he gets repaid his costs that he's financed or fronted for the TIF out of the first increment generated by TIF 3.
Okay.
Then his cap is $1,126,200. Let me get back to it here, just so the TIF starts making money.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Ryker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, wait a minute. I'm, I'm still stuck here. I'm, this, is this for the bond that they're asking that doesn't have?
The, the agreement only has language, it has language in it that at some point the village will make a good faith effort to issue, and it's referred to as TIF revenue bonds in the agreement, specifically so that the, only the new money, the real estate tax increment from that project would be pledged to issue bonds to advance the reimbursement of his costs. So he doesn't have to wait over those 20 years. He could get it, he could get reimbursed for his costs whenever it could support a bond issue.
Through the TIF. It's not like the village has to...
Through the, through the TIF, but through the money that his project generates, only.
Right. But it doesn't, but we don't, we, the village, wouldn't take out a $1 million bond and give it to him, right?
No. And if a TIF revenue bond, here's where we get into structure, and it's impossible to really nail down what the structure of that type of financing would be until you're closer to when it would be issued. But the agreement also anticipates that if the only way that bonds could be sold, if they were, if it is they were, had to be structured as what we call alternate, alternate revenue bonds, where we'd go to the open market, and in order to sell bonds, you have to have the backing of the village's general obligation. Well, just like we did with the Treskers Project, we would have to have certain developer guarantees in place to make sure you would not have to levy the general obligation.
Okay.
So that's all contemplated in the, in the agreement.
Okay. Sorry, Margaret. I...
Okay. All right, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Back to the normal order of business, then. We would be back to Resolution 2018-5, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education, Peoria Heights Community Unit School District Number 325, and the Village of Peoria Heights for School Resource Officer. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the School District 325 and the Village of Peoria Heights for a School Resource Officer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Trustee Carter, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this is an ordinance, Resolution 2018-05, an agreement between the School District 325 and Village of Peoria Heights for a School Resource Officer, that they're in agreement that it's our officer that they will be utilizing eight, nine months out of the year, and they will reimburse the village back. I, I don't see the actual dollar amount in this, but it's about $50,000, so I make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Chief Sutton, anything to add?
No, it is $50,000, Trustee Carter, and just to outline, that's 90% of his salary. The village will pick up the other 10%. The village is also paying pension and benefits, so.
I would just like to take this time to thank Dr. Heath and the Board of Education, and we're really lucky in this community to have a, a good working relationship between the village and the school district. You don't always see that in communities. We have similar goals and objectives and a great relationship with them, and Dr. Heath and Chief and I sat down a few weeks ago to, to discuss this, and within a half hour or less, we arrived at this agreement, so thanks very much to the school district. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
And Trustee Ryker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay. Next is Ordinance 2018-1557, ordinance to the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois, ascertaining the prevailing wage rate for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works for the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
All right, I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1557.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Anything, Trustee Mariscal, you want to add on this?
Basically, this comes up every year, and we have to approve this, but this is with the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act, which means that contractors and subcontractors have to pay the labor workers and mechanics that are employed in public works, construction projects, no less than the general prevailing wage rates for work performed in that same county. So that's basically what this is. It comes out every year with the new rates.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Ryker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is Ordinance 2018-1558, an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter IV of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of permitting moving signs and banners in the B3 zoning district. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1558.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please, in the...
Um, I believe this was for the B3 zoning district. If, if I recall correctly, this was about the signs that could be along Galena Road.
Correct. We discussed this last month at committee regarding the request to allow signs in the B3 zoning district, which is Galena Road, and those are the waving signs. You, you at one time, I think, saw quite a bit of them on Prospect. Obviously, it's a violation of our ordinance, so we, we discussed it at committee, allowing these type of signs in the B3, which is Galena Road, and the board, I think, agreed that this was something we would allow, so that's why it's in front of you today.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Discussion on the motion? Thanks, Trustee Harn, by, you brought this to us, and I think it's a win-win solution for everyone involved, so thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Ryker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Ordinance 2018-1559, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 1 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights pertaining to general traffic regulations. Trustee Carter, may I have a motion to approve this, please?
I make a motion...
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Trustee Carter, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to try to attempt this. I might need the chief in here. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to, or I made a motion, to approve Ordinance Number 2018-1559. This is an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 1 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights pertaining to general traffic regulations. I do believe the codes that we, the ordinance that we had prior to were, I want to say, I guess to sum it up, maybe a summary, which doesn't really allow us to write or move, put the money where the tickets need to go, I guess. So we want to amend it to make sure that we get, so we can approve the whole Illinois vehicle code adopted, instead of just a summary like minimum driving age. There's a lot of stipulations in the minimum driving age. We want to make sure that our codes get it all. Is that right?
Yes, and it, it's really a housekeeping issue, because years ago, we adopted a lot of the Illinois Vehicle Code violations into ordinance, so we could write them under ordinance citations, and we did that for many reasons, one being revenue, because we do not get a lot out of the state citation, where local ordinance is, it all stays here. But we did the codification, it was not transferred over, so we caught that recently, and what this is, instead of individually bringing them over, we're going to adopt the entire Illinois Vehicle Code, which will still allow us to write some of those violations under local ordinance.
To think that, that, though, is the state legislature keeps that vehicle code current, we can't, we don't have the resources to, to be updating individual ordinances, strictly these chapters, and...
So with us just doing the Illinois Vehicle Code that lets us, it's updated, it automatically, in our eyes, it's updated? Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Ryker.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you all. Next is 2000, Ordinance 2018-1560, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus village property. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Trustee Harn?
Uh, we have two dump trucks that we're wanting to sell. In the past, we've put them out, we advertise in the Journal Star, we put them out, and we request sealed bids that come in. We, of course, reserve the right to refuse any offer if the offers are too low. It's, the, the two trucks are a 2001 International Dump Truck and a 2002 International Dump Truck. So I'm, I'm not really sure about the legalities exactly. I might refer that to our attorney if there's anything you want to add to that, but as far as I remember, that's how we've always done it.
Absolutely. There's any number of different ways you can go about selling, and with the, you know, seeking sealed bids is certainly a permissible, and it's probably the best way to do it, especially with big pieces of equipment like, like dump trucks. So I would say, proceed if you always have. Just anytime you sell used equipment, you gotta have an ordinance authorized.
Thank you.
Will you start at a minimum on that?
Yeah, we'll have a minimum. I, I don't know if we'll, should we publish a minimum? I mean, I don't, I don't really know what the trucks are worth. We'll have to have one of us, so I have to figure out what the value is.
Well, I would think that we would... Well, I would think that we would want to put the minimum out there, that way somebody could bid higher.
Yeah, we have in the past, we put a minimum.
Okay. I think we always have the right to reject any bid, don't we, council?
Absolutely.
How many dump trucks do we own?
Oh, man, I don't know.
Uh, we have, um, three, four, five, six, two brand-new ones, and then the other four are actually.
Two Dave funny.
Two ones probably a year, two years old, and others are, you know, ten, fifteen years old, fifteen years old.
Yeah, sixteen and seventeen years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two that we're replacing.
Yeah.
Then our fleet will be in pretty good shape, you know, we're, we're ready. And it, it's bigger than just, we're not there yet, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll wait and talk about that, then.
Okay, anyone else?
So, so we sell these two, and then we only have three, right? And then on the agenda is to purchase two more?
We'll still have the six. We'll still have.
We'll have a fleet of six.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to think about it here, about one, two, we have three new, three new ones, we're getting rid of two, so we'll still have, um, we'll still have one, what do I mark, we'll have one, we have one, we'll have one, we'll have four, I think. So, yeah, so we'll still have four after we sell these two, then we're even, there's a quality.
These two, so with these two new ones, we have a fleet of six.
And these are you, what you use to plow the streets and haul the salt?
Yeah, they're all used for, they're all used for plowing streets, for snow, they're used for, uh, for watering rakes, to help to haul, for hauling dirt, you know, haul types of things.
Salt spread.
So, um, are we taking some of the equipment off of these to put on the other ones, like the snowplows?
No, that's part of that 250,000, we're, we're re-rigging the whole, the, the whole thing. The, it's, it's a new dump box and new snowplow equipment, the whole thing.
Well, can't we, can't we use, like, the snowplows off of these on the new ones?
All of that stuff's pretty beat up.
To kind of mitigate the cost?
Yeah, they're different setups, too, they're, they're different manufacturers of trucks, so the setups are different, the older setup, the setups now are.
Yeah, it doesn't transfer very well. It'd be like taking an old pump off of an old fire truck and putting on a brand-new one, they just don't, they don't jive that well, so.
I had to try.
Hey.
And they've been beat up pretty good, so.
Yeah. You know, the, the funny thing is, the trucks really don't have a lot of miles, but they've got a million hours, because they, they run all night, they run all day, so.
Anyone else? All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Next, we'd be at, I, ordinance 2018-1561, An Ordinance Amending Title IX of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the Purpose of Adding a New Chapter 8A Providing for the Registration of Properties Rented for Residential Purposes. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for motion to approve this.
Um, I make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, okay. Go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, let's see if I can get this one correct. Okay, um, ordinance, uh, 2018-1561, this is an ordinance amending Title IX of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the Purpose of Adding a New Chapter 8A Providing the Registration of Properties Rented for Residential Purposes. Um, this is actually to put in place for a register, registration code, right? I think I got it right. Okay, I got it right. Um, so this is actually the start of getting a, um, someone hired to, to maintain, um, make sure the rental properties are up to maintaining codes, um, that this person would als, is this what this is, or am I jumping ahead?
No, no, you're right.
Okay, and this is also for, um, for our code enforcement, to make sure that they, people out there are actually, not the code enforcement, the, yeah, code ordinance building. Um, this is something that I feel very strongly, um, that we need. Now, we are not gonna go out there and hammer every single rental property, I want to make sure it's very clear out there. We are gonna, um, eventually, you know, obviously, we're not gonna be able to have somebody come in and, and look at every single rental property within a year. I mean, that's just, that's just not gonna happen. But we are, our goal, and, you know, like, say, the first three years, we want to make sure that this person does get in touch with every single rental property out there and look at it and make sure that it is up to speed. If it's up to speed, it's, it's clean, it's, it's suitable for living, um, great, you're not gonna be hounded, but if you don't meet the, the codes, then those are the people that we want to make sure that, um, we get them up to code. So, you know, if they're gonna pay this, whatever the fee's gonna be, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, that if, I don't know, say Deb has some rental property, I don't know if you do or not, but let's say Deb has some rental property and she's paying a hundred dollars, and Mark has rental property and he's paying a hundred dollars, but his rental property's crappy, guess what? We're gonna go after him. We're gonna make sure that he's paying, that he needs to get his property up to speed along with everybody else. So, I strongly, um, feel that, okay, is that the same line?
Yeah, there's no classes. It's just a hundred.
Um, it is gonna be a, sorry, Deb just pointed out, a hundred dollar fee, it's gonna be an annual fee. Um, there will not be any classes that they have to take, it's just gonna be a hundred dollar annual fee. Um, am I missing something there? Okay.
So the class part went away.
Would you like to add something, Mark?
Well, I, I, I think that, uh, trustee Carter touched on one point, that, uh, this ordinance does serve to sort of level the playing field, because you've got landlords out there that do it the right way and keep their properties up to code, and you've got others that are slackers, that don't, and, you know, this, this serves to, to ensure that everybody's playing by the same set of rules. So, I think that's an important aspect.
I feel that we have a lot of rental property here, and, um, and, and some of them, a lot of them are not up to code and, and really aren't safe for people to live in, and that's what we want to, we want to get that up, up there.
And it's a really good thing for the village, it really is. Um, I think it's holding landlords accountable, the ones that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, and this is also a topic, it's a pretty hot topic. I know they've written a paper, East Peoria just adopted this. Um, I know Bartonville and Chillicothe, they're moving forward as well, so we're not reinventing the wheel here. I think this is, uh, like trustee Carter said, if, uh, you know, the landlords are doing what they're supposed to do and taking care of their property, they really don't have an issue. Um, but again, this is, uh, they will work hand-in-hand with code enforcement, I believe they'll be housed at the police department, so it'll just be another component of code enforcement, so I think it's a win-win for the village, um, so I, I appreciate all the support.
Trustee Carter, thanks for a great job of explaining that, I appreciate it. Um, or also, when I was township supervisor, it broke my heart to have people come in for general assistance that were in rental properties, that, uh, would tell me that they didn't have a working furnace in the house when there were children in the home, when, um, the electrical wasn't working properly, when there was black mold on the walls, so we don't have a lot of those properties, but this is just life safety, um, implementation to help protect people in the community who are renting, and, incidentally, about 40% of the properties in Peoria Heights are, are rental homes, and we have some excellent landlords, um, and that we're very happy that, happy with them. This is not to be, um, coming down on them in any way, so it's just to really, to put a, a minimum expectations in place for people who are renting homes. But also what this does, we're, we have about several part-time positions that we'll be eliminating, uh, so we're consolidating all those in one, and we actually have a, a police officer that does a fantastic job of code enforcement, but that will allow the police to focus more on policing, and then this person will be responsible for code enforcement, which makes a whole lot more sense, and also building inspections. So we're, we're paying, and we're, we're lucky here in the Heights to have a whole lot of commercial, uh, development going on, so this position will also, uh, be responsible for, uh, building codes, building inspections, uh, the implementation of the landlord registration, and this, by the way, we spent a whole lot of time looking at this, we wouldn't add this position right now if it didn't entirely pay for itself in wages and benefits, so that's, that will be done as well. We're adding no cost, so, did I leave anything out?
You did not.
Okay, so any discussion on this?
No, I did have a question. The renters, then, that are living in there, would they be calling this person directly if they had a problem? So, let's just say they had a furnace that wasn't working in there, landlord wasn't willing to fix it in a timely manner or whatever. I know they call up here and talk to Sarah a lot, um, but now would they be directed to go, call this person?
They could call either number, they could call the non-emergency number, it would get to our code enforcement, who will be working with them, or they could call village hall, but it would get to the, it would get to them either way.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Can we get more details as, as to what we consider rental property and get into it?
Well, Norm, these ordinances, they should be online, they're outlined, and again, we've talked about this at length, as far as what exactly, what is a violation and, and all the terms, and yeah, you, you can get a copy of this and go through it, and if you have any questions, you know where I'm at.
So then it won't be too late?
Yeah.
Well, the board has talked about this at length, so it's, even, it might be new to you, but it's not new to them. We've gone through this for the last few months. I know, but you, you just, just from last night till today, there's been a change, uh, because it was a hundred and fifty dollar fee, they were gonna give you fifty dollars back, now it's just a hundred dollar fee, and it's been changing continuously, and we don't know what the rule is.
Well, our, our dialogue, as far as what we're charging the village, it started out during discussions that it would be a hundred and fifty dollar fee, and if they took the class, it would drop down to a hundred. We eliminated that, just went with a straight hundred dollar fee, as far as that's, to me, that's, it's a little easier to track that way, uh, but again, as we had discussion on this, this ordinance has evolved into different things. Um, so yeah, is this, is this different than we first brought it up six months? Definitely is. Another thing we just added was, you know, the apartment complexes, you know, what that's charged, that's not, if you, if you read our ordinance a few months ago, it would have been a hundred dollars a unit. We changed that, because the board decided that, you know, we wanted to, following suit with, uh, East Peoria and the city, they, they used twenty-five dollars, we thought that was fair, so that's why we changed that, but, you know, we had, this has evolved, you're right, uh, but it is, it's a big, it's a big addition, so, I mean, I didn't expect to get it right the first time and knock it out of the park, so, you know, through, through dialogue with the board, I think we, we came up with a, with a good ordinance that benefits the village, that isn't too restrictive, um, and again, like the mayor said, that it off, as far as cost-wise, it's nothing to the village, so, but yeah, you are correct, there have been changes made, but I think they've been for the better, so.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Next, we'd be at ordinance 2018-1562, An Ordinance Amending Title IX of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the Purpose of Adding a New Chapter 8B Establishing Standards for Residential Housing Within the Village. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
Um, I make a motion for ordinance 2018-1562.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so ordinance, uh, 2018-1562, this is an ordinance amending Title IX of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the Purpose of Adding a New Chapter 8B Establishing Standards for Residential Housing Within the Village. What this is, it's a definition of, um, it describes the definitions of the violations, so that would go with this last ordinance that we just passed of 2018-1561. Can I add another?
Yeah, sure, this is just basically as the mayor described, we're trying to establish minimum standards for, uh, every landlord, uh, their rental property, uh, you know, residence.
Counsel, just so everybody can hear you at home, would you pull your mic, thank you.
So, the, the goal here is to set very clear standards, so that all the landlords know exactly what's expected of them, and the ordinance is a little long, but it's, uh, it addresses all of the issues with every apartment. Um, you know, the exits have to be clear and unobstructed, um, on down the line, and it's, any, anytime you're enacting, uh, new rules, uh, you need to define those rules clearly, uh, and that's this, uh, this is that piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, chief Sutton? Any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And trustee Carter.
Aye.
Thank you, all that passes. Next, ordinance 2018-1563, An Ordinance of the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois Providing for the Acquisition of Two Dump Trucks and Accessories for the Borrowing of Not More Than $250,000 from Morton Community Bank for the Purpose of Financing the Purpose of the Dump Trucks. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for motion to approve this.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Trustee Harn, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Phelan. Uh, this was put into our budget, and, uh, we, what we'll be doing is, we're looking at borrowing $250,000 for them, from the Morton Community Bank, um, we'll be buying two 2018 Ford F-750s. The payments will be spread out over seven years, it will start from 6/2018, go through 6/2025. Uh, the payments will be made monthly, and it will be thirty-three-hundred, sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents per month at 3.53% interest. I make a motion, we approve our new dump trucks.
I think we got that, we got the motion.
Okay.
Any questions for trustee Harn? Any discussion on the motion? Dave, anything you add to this? Okay, all right. If you're ready for the question, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is request for approval for the purchase of a police and administrative vehicle. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion, I make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Trustee Carter, go ahead.
Okay, this is for, we need approval to purchase, purchase a police and administrative vehicle. What we did, we, the chief and I have done is, we actually, we, when we were going through the budget, we had budgeted for one car for $25,000. What we're going to do with this car is, we're going to make it into a traffic car, which will be used on the streets for $18,947. Now, if we made this into a black and white car, full police car, it would be an additional $15,000, $20,000 more, so, I make a motion, I already did a motion, so.
Thank you.
I don't know how much more detail you want. It's $18,947, and we're making it into a traffic car, not a police car, black and white, because we're going to save money right now.
Another good job-
And we need to rotate the cars.
Good job of explaining that, Chief, anything you do?
No, just, as we discussed before, as far as what we considered this car being used for, as far as administrative, we will put, take another vehicle out of the fleet if it's needed within the village, so we will make this a traffic car, we won't exceed the amount, but we will have to put a little bit more equipment in it to make it a traffic car, but it won't be, it will be nothing like the black and white vehicle as far as cost, and we do have money in that equipment line item, even though we considerably cut that line item, we still have a little bit left, so, we still, it'll be a win-win for everyone.
So, we're getting $2,500 for the trade-in?
Correct. That's the vehicle that was parked out here for, with over 100,000 miles, that they used for administrative vehicle at Village Hall over the last couple of years. That is the vehicle that was traded in, and I'm pretty happy with that trading, considering the shape it was in, so.
Okay, I guess, I have a question. I know we talked about this last time, too, but I still don't understand the need for this vehicle. When you say traffic car, what does that mean? I mean, is that, there's no lights on it, no siren, no radio, no?
No, there are.
So, what it, there is?
Yeah, there are. The only difference, Trustee Mariska, is it's, it won't be black and white, it won't have a light bar, all the lights will be inside, like a traffic car, like an unmarked, but it will be outfitted to conduct traffic stops, go to calls for service, it will be. Just a different assignment, is the best way to put it, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I wasn't, I thought it was just going to be-
No.
Than that.
So, it'll have the cage, it'll have the computer?
It'll have a ca, it'll have a cage, computer, it'll be black, and it will not be black and white, it'll be black, it won't have a light bar, it'll be, like I said, it'll be a different designation, but it will be used for patrol purposes, because outfitting it completely would, you know, that's the reason we, we decided to go this route months ago when we were cutting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
So, this won't be used, then, for any sort of administrative purpose, like, is shown on the agenda?
No, that was the initial thought, when, when I, when I offered that to the administration here, but now that I'm here, and if they do need an administrative vehicle, we can pull that from our fleet, so.
Are you cycling out another just traffic car, then? Did I, did you say that already?
Yeah, we did trade in the one, yeah, the one excess car we had, we traded in. That's the $2,500.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, anyone else? If you're ready, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Thank you all, that passes. Next is a request for approval for the purchase of Tower Park cameras. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I move to approval for the five cameras.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Trustee Gett, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to put up five megapixel cameras, infrared, so we can, without the police up here, we need to have surveillance up here, and we have a panic button, which I gather is just going to be direct to the police station, and we'll be, these will be supervised or watched down there at the police station, correct?
Correct, they'll be, they'll be on the same server as all the cameras in Village Hall and the PD, so.
Yeah, okay, well, because it'd be kind of ridiculous to have it if nobody's watching, that's the whole idea. We've invested a lot of money up here, and I hate to see anything go wrong, and I think it's, like I said, I thought this was already taken care of a couple of years ago, I guess not, so, I think it's a great idea. And he managed to give us a discount, saving $568, so.
Thank you, Trustee Gett, any questions, discussion? Not only will this protect people, our citizens in Tower Park, but also we have a lot of young people who work at Tower Park, and it ensures their safety as well, so. Okay, if you're ready, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
I don't believe we got a second on that.
I thought, Brian.
Brian.
Did? Okay. And who seconded the previous one? With Carter?
I did that one, too.
Guess I can't hear you.
Sorry.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Next is a request for a donation in the amount of $500 to the Peoria Heights Community Band. Trustee Dan Mariska, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation request in the amount of $500 to the Peoria Heights Community Band.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Go ahead, Trustee Mariska, if you want to explain this.
Yeah, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, but if you guys recall, I think they initially came to the board with a request for $1,000, and we had asked them if, you know, they would be open or amicable to decreasing to that amount by 50%. Administrator Sutton gave them a call, and they were open to that, so I would say, let's go ahead and move forward and give them that $500.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, all that passes. Next, Jim Simmons, special use permit approval. Trustee Dan Mariska, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit for Jim Simmons.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Jim Simmons passed PHPD inspection. If we were to approve this permit, it would allow him to operate a small engine repair shop Tuesday through Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00 PM, and it would be valid for one year.
Thank you, any questions? Any discussion?
I can't believe he's still doing it. He's got to be getting up there.
Okay, if you're ready, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariska.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, moving right along, Chuck's Auto Sales, special use approval. Trustee Mariska, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit for Chuck's Auto Sales.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead, sir.